Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado del Derrango de noviembre 19. Lo siento, no tenemos más espacio. Esta es una buena imagen para tener cuando necesitamos un nuevo salón de mesa.
Y como acabamos de decir, estamos muy contentos de que tengamos asientos reservados.
Sí, lo hacemos.
Y amo la democracia en su mejor momento.
Así que voy a empezar diciendo que todos... Es Thanksgiving la próxima semana, todos estamos muy agradecidos. Llegó muy rápido. Y así voy a empezar esta noche escuchando a nuestros consejeros qué podríamos estar agradecidos por, muy brevemente.
Así que supongo que tengo que empezar, y realmente, sobre todo, la única cosa que puedo pensar es cuánto estoy agradecido de que tengamos una comunidad tan involucrada. Así que, gracias.
Mis pensamientos son exactamente: una comunidad diversa con una participación pública increíble. Muchas gracias. Socialmente diversos, económicamente diversos, y gracias a todos por estar aquí. Por cierto, no estamos dando turquesas gratis, no sé por qué todos vinieron.
Bueno, estoy agradecido de vivir en esta gran comunidad, Durango, y gracias a todos ustedes por venir, por participar en la participación pública. Espero que todos tomarán sus tres minutos.
Todos los días hago mi gratitud y pienso en las diez cosas que estoy agradecida por, y siempre en la lista es que mi esposo y yo encontramos a Durango. También estoy extremadamente agradecida por la participación ciudadana, y también diré que estos días estoy agradecida que no me rompieron el cuello, la espalda o las piernas, y tengo cirugía mañana.
Y yo también estoy muy agradecida por nuestra comunidad pasionada y involucrada. Estoy agradecida por nuestro personal dedicado y comprometido, y estoy realmente agradecida por mis miembros de consejo que trabajan tan duro en hacer el trabajo que hacemos. Así que gracias a todos por unirse a nosotros. Y con eso, Miss Phillips, ¿podemos hacer un llamamiento, por favor?
Claro. Consejero Baxter.
Presente.
Consejero Bettine.
Aquí.
Consejero Noseworthy.
Presente.
Mayor Pro Tim Bruckey.
Aquí.
Y Mayor Yusuf.
Aquí.
Cámara de Cuidado, ¿tenemos algún conflicto de interés real o percibido esta noche? Bien, vamos a pasar directamente a la participación pública. Si alguien puede trabajar su camino hacia abajo, o si alguien puede darme la lista.
Ah, Brett, sabes cómo hacer esto.
Es increíble que haya... Voy a... Cuando te llamo, por favor, únete al podium, si puedes hacer tu camino hacia arriba. Cuéntame tu nombre y dirección claramente, para que se den cuenta. Y voy a sugerir que el consejero Bettine será nuestro guardián del tiempo. Elevará la mano a dos y media minutos, y a tres y media... Tres minutos, voy a cortarte, por favor, esta vez. Si tengo que usar el gabel, lo haré, me gustaría mucho menos no. Es la posición del consejo que si dejamos que una persona vaya, sentimos que realmente necesitamos ser justos y dejar que todos vayan. Cuando tenemos tantas personas en la habitación, realmente pedimos que respeten nuestro límite de tres minutos y que sepan que estamos escuchando activamente lo que tienes que decir, y estamos realmente agradecidos de que estés aquí. Así que con eso, voy a llamar adelante a Beatriz García.
Sí, nombre y teléfono.
Nombre y dirección.
Nombre y dirección, sí.
El inglés es mi segundo idioma, así que voy a tratar de hacerlo lo más rápido y claro posible. Bien, mi nombre es Beatriz A. García, vivo en 24 Lewis Mountain, en Durango. Soy madre hispana de tres hijos. Ellos están en el parque secundario. Estamos aquí para hablar sobre las políticas de ICE en nuestra comunidad. Represento a personas, incluidos inmigrantes como yo, que están preocupadas por el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Creemos en el código civil que abrió esta reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado. Respeto, compasión, amabilidad, sinceridad, justicia, consideración, responsabilidad y aceptación. Sin embargo, el sistema de Inmigración y Customs Enforcement, o ICE, que es parte de la seguridad nacional, no sigue este código civil. Estoy extremadamente preocupada por la presencia de ICE en nuestra comunidad, especialmente fuera de nuestras escuelas. Un evento que afectó al parque secundario ayudó a ilustrar mi preocupación. No mencionaré los nombres de las personas involucradas para proteger sus identidades. En la tarde de agosto, el día después de que la policía de Garete visitara el parque secundario, agentes de ICE siguieron a un hombre y a su hija a la escuela. El hombre levantó la cabeza a su hija mientras los agentes observaban. Algunos minutos después, mientras el hombre iba a trabajar, los agentes de ICE lo sacaron del vehículo y lo llevaron a detención. Encontré este incidente varios días después de que ocurriera, y inmediatamente contacté al principal del parque secundario así como a la esposa del hombre detenido, para ofrecerles su ayuda a su hijo y sus hijos. Así es como aprendí más sobre los detalles de este caso. ¿Cuál era el crimen, podría preguntar? Flee por el país, violando la violencia en México. Este hombre contribuyó a nuestra economía local. Su hija estudió en nuestras escuelas. Su esposa es una madre amorosa, y su único crimen fue intentar proteger a sus familias de ser asesinados como otros miembros de su familia. En lugar de recibir a su familia con armas, como mi familia hace un año, nos fuimos a Nicaragua. Dejaron a ICE detenerlo y separarlo de su familia. Es un tipo de comunidad que queremos para nosotros mismos. Esta es la pregunta que todos estaríamos pensando. ICE insta la miedo en la comunidad inmigrante y cuestiona nuestros derechos constitucionales ignorando los procedimientos. Los niños de nivel secundario están aprendiendo que los padres están siendo quitados de sus hijos por las autoridades. Mi hija tiene seis años, y hace varias semanas estuvo ante ustedes para recibir una tarjeta de maravilla de la tienda de libros de María. Y aunque sea inocente, ella sabe que un padre fue quitado de su hija. ¿Cómo lo esperábamos? Esto nos afecta a todos. Los niños reciben consejos, los padres reciben ayuda psicológica y económica. Vivir en miedo. Aquí quiero citar a la esposa de la mujer que fue detenida. Me dijo: "Mi hija llora cada vez que ve a una policía volviendo." Ahora es más temerosa que cuando estaba en México. Y ICE sigue intimidando a esta familia. ¿Es un tipo de comunidad que queremos? Creo que tenemos una opción. Podemos ceder a ICE y sus prácticas repressivas.
Tu tiempo termina.
O podemos estar en nuestro código civil. Espero que todos puedan estar conmigo.
Muchas gracias. Vamos a pasar, por favor, a Miss Lynn Morrison.
Soy Lynn Morrison, 118 Villa Oeste. Los niños roban de sus padres, o los padres se separan forzadamente de sus hijos, son actos de crueldad, no de civildad. La noción de servicio público para nuestras comunidades es violada cuando las políticas de violencia, racismo y negación de los derechos humanos contra nuestras comunidades inmigrantes se convierten en práctica común. ¿Nuestros agentes siguen las normas de ICE? La vigilancia de las comunidades residenciales sin sospechar del crimen es una forma de profilar en nuestra comunidad. La narrativa del comportamiento criminal está mayormente fabricada para perseguir estas prácticas de detener a inmigrantes. ¿Podrías reconocer a un agente de ICE en su llamado garb de protección? Caminan nuestras carreteras usando máscaras negras, cubriendo sus faces, conduciendo a sus lotes de parking con solo puertas abiertas para sus ojos. Obtenemos que nuestros toxinas se usan para intimidar y morder miedo. Las apropiaciones de legisladores deberían alejar el financiamiento de ICE hacia programas que nuestras comunidades realmente necesitan para prosperar: educación, vivienda, cuidado de salud. Creemos que es hora de restablecer que Durango no apoya el odio. Creemos que el odio y las máscaras no tienen lugar en nuestra comunidad. Estamos incentivados que el sexto jurídico DA planea instituir entrenamiento para la aplicación de la ley para que cuando un crimen suceda, se pueda determinar si el crimen fue cometido debido a odio o discriminación en el grupo.
Miss Kathy Barrett, por favor.
Mi nombre es Kathy Barrett, y vivo en 340 Ridge Road. Y estoy aquí para recordaros, a menos que nos olvidemos, que el miedo visitó Durango en 1992. Durango tuvo su propia prueba con otra organización conocida por su máscara y ropa. La Clan Ku Klux Klan. Desde el college de Fort Lewis, a la tribu de Southern U, a los personal, docentes y estudiantes del college, y a la comunidad empresarial, Durango se centró en la KKK. La labor de esta coalición fue reflejada en un argumento de los estudiantes de Native Americanos. ¡No escuchen a la Clan! ¡No denles una audiencia! ¡Envíenles este mensaje! ¡No eres importante! La comunidad se unió y estuvo fomentando los valores del college y protegiendo el presente y el futuro de la gente, la comunidad y el college. En este espíritu histórico, propusimos una resolución de la Cámara de Cuidado de Durango para abolir el uso de máscaras por las autoridades de ICE y otras agencias gubernamentales actuando en su capacidad oficial. Hemos visto a ICE atado en esto y en otras máscaras en nuestra comunidad. Tenemos imágenes de ello. Pensamos que estaban cargados de asegurar nuestras comunidades, no arrojando miedo y intimidación. Pensamos que la aplicación de la ley se identificaba en una interacción pública y decía dónde venían. No hacen eso. En el interés de fomentar una ciudad sin odio, con énfasis en la libertad de miedo, queremos orgullosos de nuestra civilidad, no de esto.
Miss DeeDee Deharrow Brown, por favor.
Yo soy DeeDee Deharrow Brown, y vivo en 3065 East Second Avenue en Durango. Me preocupa las actividades de ICE en Durango no solo debido al nivel de miedo y intimidación que crean en la comunidad inmigrante y la violación del código civil de Durango, sino debido al efecto que tiene en los negocios y nuestra economía. Hemos visto a ICE estrenar negocios que se esconden en las calles mientras los empleados intentan entrar a sus trabajos. Los sorprenden y arrestan a trabajadores que han estado aquí durante años, que son amigos, familia y amados. Estos son empleados de impuestos que no tienen registros criminales. Hemos observado a ICE profesionalmente profilar a otros trabajadores, los sacarles y intimidarlos. Los negocios en una economía dirigida por turistas dependen gravemente de la fuerza laboral inmigrante. Esta es una realidad. Estos son trabajadores calificados, dedicados y confiables. La vigilancia de ICE de los negocios locales y el arresto consecutivo crea miedo. Y los empleados a menudo tienen miedo de llegar a trabajar. Algunos se han ido. Los negocios se despiden para encontrar sustitutos después de que sus trabajadores capacitados y entrenados sean retirados por ICE. Un dueño local que paga a todos sus empleados un salario justo y beneficios, me dijo que las actividades de ICE son disruptivas para su negocio. Incluso pensó en cerrar uno de sus negocios si ICE continuaba sus tácticas. Dijo que definitivamente afecta la moraleja y el estado de ánimo de su personal. Los clientes de estos negocios a menudo son sorprendidos y tristes cuando descubren que su trabajador favorito o incluso dueño de negocios está de repente desaparecido. También me gustaría abordar el problema de la transparencia. En diciembre de last año, Kathy Barrett, quien habló anteriormente, y yo hicimos una visita al oficio de ICE de la Cámara de Cuidado de 32 Shepherd Drive en Bodo Park. Hablamos con un agente y le preguntamos preguntas. Le preguntamos: "¿Cuántos agentes tienes en Durango?" No nos dijo. Le preguntamos: "¿Cuáles son tus objetivos y metas en Durango?" Su respuesta fue mantener a nuestros oficiales seguros. Le pedimos una visita a la instalación, y esa solicitud fue rechazada. Todos sabemos que si vas al Departamento de Policía de Durango o al oficio de la policía, te dan esta información. Como ICE tiene esta cultura de secreto y no responderá nuestras preguntas, tal vez respondiera a la Ciudad de Durango. Pedimos que se involucre con ellos y discutan los siguientes problemas y formen un plan que se adhiera a nuestro código de civildad: objetivos y metas de ICE en Durango, el número de agentes, el efecto desagradable de los niños en nuestra comunidad, el uso de garb de miedo y terror, como las máscaras, la vigilancia de la cárcel, las escuelas, los negocios
Gracias.
y residencias privadas de ciudadanos estadounidenses.
Gracias.
Si todos están de acuerdo con lo que hemos dicho sobre ICE hoy, ¿podrías levantarte o aplaudir?
Sarah, creo que probablemente Sarah Burris.
Sí. Sarah Burris, 112 East 31st Street. Consejeros, ¿pueden ver cuánto está lleno el pasillo? ¿Pueden bajar para que puedan ver? El pasillo está lleno.
¿Lo es?
Sí.
Por el gusto de tiempo, si están de acuerdo en las cosas, muevan sus bolsas en el aire.
Voy a dar mi mayor parte del tiempo y luego combinarlo con los estudiantes. Tenemos unos estudiantes aquí para hablar también.
Bien. No estamos dando tiempo, continúen hablando y los estudiantes pueden hablar.
Bien. Algunos años atrás, intenté y fracasé en comenzar una prohibición de bolsas en Durango, así que decidí que quería enfocarme en un proyecto alternativo para... Un proyecto para alternativos de plástico de uso único. Tomamos camisetas reusables, presumiblemente dirigidas al desechue, y los transformamos en bolsas reusables. Estas se dan a ambos mercados de la ciudad. Justamente se abre una puerta en el mercado de la ciudad sur esta semana. El apoyo para este proyecto es inspirador y muy fuerte indicación de sentimiento público hacia la eliminación de bolsas de plástico. A través de este proyecto, he tenido la suerte de trabajar con casi 40 personas. ¿Quién en cualquier forma está asociado con el proyecto de bolsas aquí esta noche? Sí, gracias. Gracias por venir. Tenemos nueve organizaciones y muchos estudiantes. Algunos de estos estudiantes están aquí, y me gustaría dar mi tiempo a ellos.
Gracias. Hey, estudiantes, tienen que decir su nombre y dirección, por la recordación.
Greta Cahill, 3156 East Sixth Avenue. Hola, mi nombre es Greta Cahill, y estamos aquí hoy para hablar a cargo de las voces de los estudiantes en nuestra comunidad. El plástico ha estado en nuestras manos durante toda mi vida, y no voy a mentir, ha servido un propósito como una simple conveniencia para los trabajos diarios de la vida. Pero a través de la amplia cantidad de consumo que el mundo ha tenido, hemos visto consecuencias importantes de esta simple conveniencia. Animales siendo sufocados por rincas de plástico, acumulación bioalimentaria entrando en nuestro sistema alimentario, y según múltiples fuentes, los océanos estimados contienen más plástico que peces por el año 2050 son solo tres ejemplos de por qué esta conveniencia ha afectado y será afectada el mundo para años a venir. Hemos tenido la frase "reducir, reutilizar y reciclar" en nuestras cabezas para siempre, y he aprendido que hay algo que viene antes de reducir: renunciar. Es hora de renunciar a las bolsas de plástico como comunidad y ser parte del cambio para prohibir el efecto desagradable. Es nuestra prioridad y responsabilidad ser parte del cambio para prohibir el efecto desagradable de la simple conveniencia de plástico en nuestro medio ambiente y la vida de nuestras especies. Gracias.
Yo soy Hannah Shu, 67 Sun Ridge Lane, y soy señora de la escuela de Anamis. Durango tiene una gran comunidad exterior con muchos atletas de outdoor y guerreros de fin de semana. La prohibición de bolsas de plástico es una forma grande en que nosotros como comunidad podemos hacer un esfuerzo para reformar el cambio climático y proteger el medio ambiente que todos conocemos y amamos. También podemos mirar al mundo para ver que este cambio ya está sucediendo. Otros lugares como Moab, Utah y Australia ya tienen una prohibición, así que sabemos que es posible. Durango ama la naturaleza, y nosotros también, y eso es lo que es la línea inferior.
Ron Harvey, 95 County Road 205.
Espera un segundo. Miss Phillips, espero que estén obteniendo estos nombres y direcciones porque no están en esta lista. Gracias.
He nacido en un mundo donde el calentamiento global es algo que me afectará y siempre. Es algo que me mantiene en la noche y algo que me preocupa todo el tiempo. Los adolescentes siempre y siempre serán afectados por el calentamiento global, y lo mismo con las generaciones que nos siguen. Muchos adolescentes que me preguntan siempre tratan de culpar al calentamiento global por... ¡Oh, es como generaciones que vienen antes de nosotros, todo es su culpa! Pero todavía estamos usando combustibles fósiles. Estamos quemando más de 21 billones de toneladas de dióxido de carbono cada año, y estamos contribuyendo al PPGP, o Paseo de Garbage del Pacífico, que ahora es el doble de tamaño de Texas. No podemos culpar a nadie por lo que está sucediendo. Lo que podemos hacer, sin embargo, es tratar de hacer una diferencia, y es por eso que yo y todos estamos aquí hoy para tratar de hacer una diferencia. Gracias.
Maddie Gottfeldy, 28 To Delta Lane. En general, estoy aquí hoy por la misma razón que todos estos chicos. Queremos ver una diferencia en cómo Durango en particular está usando el plástico, y queremos ver que esa diferencia se expanda. Y firmemente creo que todo cambio comienza desde un punto pequeño, y si son bolsas de plástico, entonces deberíamos tomar eso en cuenta y seguir con ella.
Isabel Harringer, 831 Valentine Drive.
Más fuerte o más lenta?
Bien. Hola, estoy hablando a cargo de mi generación así como de las generaciones futuras que vendrán. Y me gustaría decir que un día realmente me gustaría tener hijos, pero no estoy planeando eso porque si el estado de nuestro medio ambiente disminuye o sigue avanzando de la manera que es, simplemente no quiero traer otro niño a este mundo. Así que creo que sería realmente importante como comunidad aceptar esta prohibición de bolsas de plástico para que podamos tener generaciones que vienen.
Kathleen, ¿sigues?
Sí. Kathleen Adams, 603 East Ninth Street. Estaba para decir percatarse y escuchar y observar, pero no hay necesidad de eso. Creo que estás percatada. La acción habla más que las palabras, así que estoy feliz de que todos sepan, como se demuestra por mi basura, toda la red de cuadros que firmé que evito cualquier cosa con cualquier uso único. Por lo tanto, estoy representando a los apoyadores aquí y allá, y a los firmadores de 1,299 peticiones. Esa fue nuestra última cuenta. Y pedimos una cosa esta noche, un tema singular, que ustedes pongan una prohibición... Lo siento. Que ustedes pongan este tema en su nueva agenda, nueva agenda de negocios. Nuestro plan esta noche fue tomar un par de plazos de tres minutos para hablar sobre el tiempo. Así que cuando termine, el testimonio para las prohibiciones estará hecho. No podemos controlar la libertad de expresión, sin embargo. Así que queríamos hablar sobre el tiempo y el proceso, no tanto razonales. Ustedes saben las razones detrás de esto. Nos hemos escuchado ya todos ustedes. Gracias por eso. Su atención a este extremadamente urgente estado de salud de nuestro planeta se demuestra por el desarrollo y la adopción de los objetivos de acción del clima, que recientemente han tratado, como primeros. Gracias por esa acción crítica también. La urgencia de disminuir los plásticos se ha demostrado por numerosos países, ciudades y estados que tienen prohibiciones de plástico. Ya hay 13 en Colorado, con Denver recientemente activado. La urgencia también se ha demostrado por científicos encontrando microplásticos que se acumulan alrededor y en nosotros. La urgencia también se ha demostrado por jóvenes que necesitan poder actuar y hacer una diferencia tangible. Al mismo tiempo, estamos conscientes de su actual agenda lleno de miedo. Sabemos que su discusión no puede pasar inmediatamente, probablemente hasta el verano en el principio. Sabemos que este tema es complejo y tiene una historia controversial en Durango. Como nuestros representantes electos, su sabiduría sobre el tiempo y los medios de desarrollo de la orden es paramounte. Sabemos que este cambio de paradigma de autonomía a regulación benevolencia toma tiempo, educación y especialmente sabiduría. Pedimos la unidad de misión para moverse de una cultura de conveniencia y desperdicio a continuar hacia Durango más allá de los plásticos. Ahora, antes de que el reloj acabe, me detendré para que ninguno de ustedes necesite apretarle la cabeza a mí. Eso es una broma interna.
Pasamos a Tom Berry, por favor. Gracias por su paciencia.
Eso fue... eso es democracia.
Eso es correcto.
Hola, mi nombre es Tom Berry, vivo en 786 Anamis View Drive en Durango. Lo siento por escribir esto y leerlo a ustedes, pero quería mantenerlo en mis tres minutos. Estoy aquí para representar al pueblo de la ciudad en Anamis View Drive. Servir como presidente de la Asociación de los propietarios de hogares, probablemente porque levanté la mano. He vivido en Anamis View Drive durante más de nueve años, y tenemos una situación grave y peligrosa con el uso de la calle, específicamente el límite de velocidad de 35 millas por hora. Si comparas Anamis View Drive con 32nd Street, verás que mientras disfrutamos un límite de velocidad... Mientras ellos disfrutan de un límite de velocidad de 25 millas por hora, nuestro límite es 10 millas por hora más alto, lo que significa que el tráfico real va mucho más rápido. Alrededor de Anamis View Drive no tenemos parques de lado, no tenemos puentes, una carretera, una carretera de bicicleta o una carretera de giro como hacen en 32nd Street. Tenemos muchos esquinas ciegas en Anamis View Drive mientras se esconde en dos carreteras que han estado allí durante mucho tiempo. En Anamis View Drive tenemos automóvil, pies, bicicleta, perros, tráfico pedestrianso con una alta concentración de unidades de vivienda, que consisten en al menos 34 casas, 14 apartamentos, 204 casas y condominios y 100 unidades de vivienda en el parque móvil de la ciudad en el lado sur de Anamis View Drive. Además, hay un parque RV con 100 sitios advertidos de agua y electricidad y 90 sitios en el lado norte. Esto excede mucho las unidades de vivienda o la orientación de tráfico de 32nd Street. A medida que el Oxbó River se enciende, el tráfico solo aumentará. Pedimos respetuosamente que el límite de velocidad en Anamis View Drive sea abordado con una reducción de 25 millas por hora. La Cámara de Cuidado ha aprobado una reducción de 25 millas por hora, hasta donde sé, en 32nd Street. Y eso fue debido a las objeciones del personal. Pedimos de la parte del personal de la ciudad una reducción de velocidad, primero con el Departamento de Policía, luego a la Ciudad de Durango, y básicamente se rechazaron y nos dijeron que probablemente no pasaría. Sabemos que un límite de velocidad menor no será popular, pero tampoco los colisiones de vehículos pedestrians y de bicicleta que están limitados a su suceder. Consideren que Anamis View Drive tiene la misma velocidad que la Avenida Norte. Además, pedimos respetuosamente que la presencia de la policía se eleve en Anamis View Drive para enforzar el nuevo límite de velocidad. Además, la luz norte y sur... Lo siento, la luz norte y sur se enciende en la intersección de Anamis View Drive y la autopista 50. at the intersection of Animus View Drive and Highway 550 is routinely run. And I've witnessed this week, or this last week, a multi-unit tank truck running a totally red light. And not even slowing down. This happens on a weekly basis. Thanks for your attention, and we hope that we can reduce the speed limit on Animus View Drive. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. It's Durango High School first.
Hi, I'm Jade Pruitt, speaking on behalf of Durango High School, 2390 Main Avenue. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the community ambassador on Durango High School Student Council, and I give monthly reports to the city council about what DHS Student Council is doing. So this month, DHS Student Council held a rake-and-run on November 2nd. Over 30 students helped to rake community members' yards for free. The Native American Club hosted the Powwow slash Craft Fair on the 16th, and we saw a large community turnout, so thank you. On November 8th, DHS held a Veterans Day Assembly, where we hosted over 40 community veterans, and we honored their service and sacrifice. Also, 505 students will be taking AP exams this year from DHS. This is a great increase from last year, where we had 428 students. DHS Student Leadership and Fort Lewis College Student Leadership are meeting to discuss how each other's group organizations function and what common interests and issues they have. Most fall sports have ended at DHS, and we are excited to start the winter sports season. That being said, we're excited to send off football, who has made it to the second round of state playoffs and will be playing Public County this Saturday. Lastly, this is the last weekend of Troop 1096's production of The Little Mermaid, so buy your tickets online. It is Thursday and Friday at 7 PM. Thank you.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I live at 2256 West Second Avenue. I came tonight to talk about two things. First, I want to thank Mayor Youssef, Council Bateen, and Council Burkey for your support in protecting the pedestrians by funding the long plan for bridges at 32nd Street. And to finish the Animus River Trail North, thank you for listening to the Parks and Rec Board and the Multimodal Board for their recommendation in funding the bridges on 32nd Street. I want to thank you for listening to Superintendent Dan Snowberger and the Riverview Elementary PTO and the Needham Elementary PTO in asking for protection for children and pedestrians by funding the bridges at 32nd Street. We are at the finish line of the Animus River Trail North. After a decade of meetings and planning, it is the right thing to do to protect pedestrians from interaction with cars. This will be your legacy long after you are gone from city council. I'm very, very proud of your support, and I look forward to the future and riding and walking across those bridges for pedestrian safety. Second, I came to talk about the city council of 2012. I was on that 2012 city council when we banned plastic bags. I certainly support the banning of plastic bags from Durango. I know Kroger's has put a timeline of 2025, but Durango is a vibrant city, and you saw the support from the people here. And it really made my heart soar with energy to think that Durango will be joining numerous states and cities across the United States, in Europe, and Hawaii in the banning of plastic bags. I look forward to future city council action. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sally Smith. I live at 342 Confluence Avenue in Three Springs. I was here last month with seven other people who are really trying to keep at the forefront of you guys' minds like you don't have enough to keep on your minds already, the ice arena, the full-time ice arena for Durango. I am a figure skating coach for US Figure Skating. I am flown all over the country, and I do seminars and conduct camps for ice athletes as well as their parents. We've made some progress since last month, and I just wanted you to know that because I know you're looking at that master plan. We had seven of us here last month. Today, between all of this, we still have about 25 of us here, and we've now got a database that's 140 people of emails that we're communicating with, and that's growing by one or two every day. So there's a huge passion for having full-time ice in Durango. I'm a little confused why we don't. I came from Denver, and we have more adult hockey players here than we had at my three-ice surface rink in Denver. We have such an amazing Parks and Recreation Department here, and we offer so many wonderful programs for so many of our community members. And I just think it's time for the ice athletes to get a chance to train full-time too and have a full-time rink. And we would love to see that happen. I know that every year, the Parks and Rec Department does a survey of residents of the town of Durango, and they have on that all their priorities. And I know the ice arena is really low on that list. However, through our database that we're now gathering, this grassroots effort, we're finding that so many people that are really passionate about this ice arena live outside the city limits. And I know that's a problem because they don't pay taxes for these programs, but you can surcharge them. I paid a surcharge for 14 years for my kid to skate at South Suburban because I lived outside of the Parks and Rec District. And I don't see a problem with that, and I don't think our people do either. I think we now have to factor in the outlying areas. I guess it's the sentiment of, if you build it, they will come. And I do believe if you build it, they will come. They will come from Edgemont Ranch. They will come from Twin Buttes. They will come from Bayfield. They'll come from Mankos and Hermosa, and from all the outlying areas. This is a big program we've got. And we now got some teaching professionals at the rink here that are really highly trained and are gonna be able to make this a successful program. So, on very short notice, we got 30 here. Last month, we had seven. We got 140 waiting for an email. And if you build it, they will come. They will most definitely come. Thank you. Not as important as plastic bags, but important.
Hi, Janet Wiley, 312 Fiesta Circle, Durango, Colorado. I want to thank you again for having the opportunity. To thank you for the support on the bridge for 32nd Street that not only crosses the 32nd Street, but also the railroad tracks and the river, making it a safe crossing. I'm a lifelong resident and an engaged participant in the Animus River Trail. And I know we've been up here before. You've heard all of the proponents' comments on, you know, the support for the Multimodal Board and the GoCo funding and all this. But from the last time I've spoken in front of you, I did a little bit of research. And I read What Makes a Bikeable Community. I did a little research on that. There's multiple publications that do these sorts of surveys: Bicycle Magazine, People for Bikes, the League of American Cyclists, and NACTO, which is a National Association of City Transportation Officials. These publications gather data from publicly available databases from government sources and new data from online communities, city snapshots, and public forums. The influences of a bikeable community survey include ridership, networks, friendliness. But the number-one factor in all of these surveys comes back to safety. In Bicycle Magazine, 50 best cities surveyed, completed in 2018. They listed 50 cities in America. They usually reserve that list for metropolitan areas, recognizing the difficulty in introducing biking infrastructure in a large metropolitan area. However, in this 2018 survey, number three was Fort Collins, Colorado. They couldn't leave that one out of their survey because Fort Collins is doing so much right to create a bikeable community. Directly out of that survey, what makes Fort Collins so great is that this city has focused its building pathways to move cyclists through town quickly and efficiently. They are purposefully building pathways with under and overpasses at nearly every street crossing. You rarely have to interface with cars. In fact, there are currently 45 of these grade crossings, either underpasses or bridges. Forty-five. That's time? Yeah. Anyway, I just want to say, it's a beautiful concept. It's a decade-long vision, and it will be one that you'll be proud of as a council. Thank you very much.
Is this okay? I was calling for Mr. Jacob Fillion. Maybe he didn't hear. I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine.
I'll give you another opportunity.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Fillion. I live at 191 Riverview Drive here in Durango. I'm here to ask the city council to approve the draft 2019 Durango Parks Open Space Trails and Recreation Master Plan. Individually, as a resident and taxpayer of the city, I use many of the Parks and Recreation facilities and amenities, from walking or biking the Animus River Trail to working out and playing pickleball at the rec center. So I have an interest in seeing this plan passed. But I am here today as a president of the Southwest Colorado Pickleball Association, and I represent our 145 paying members. Our request is to approve the 2019 plan. 2010 master plan is out of date. Our mission is to promote and grow the sport of pickleball. You are probably aware that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Courts and tournaments are popping up all across the nation. Most of the cities and towns on the western slope currently have outdoor pickleball courts. Recently, 26 Durango residents traveled to Indian Wells, California, six of us to participate in the USA National Pickleball Championships, the others to cheer us on. Pickleball is truly a community-oriented sport. In Durango, we have players who range in age from high school teenagers to one member who is 88 years old. Men and women, young and old, compete together. We have one family that at times, the grandfather, who just turned 85, plays on the same court with his son and grandson, oftentimes beating them. We have a member who suffered from severe depression. Pickleball has helped her overcome her depression to where she now functions more fully in society, and was recently hired by Parks and Rec as a lifeguard at the rec center. In September, we co-hosted a pickleball tournament with Durango High School. Ninety participants competed over two days. They came from the Four Corners area, California, Arizona, New Mexico. The tournament had two objectives: to demonstrate the viability and popularity of outdoor pickleball in Durango, and as a fundraiser for the Durango High School athletic and activities programs. We raised $1,500 for Durango High School. That, and the number of players and distances traveled, clearly demonstrates that we achieved both of our objectives. I am here to ask you to approve the master plan. We would like to have dedicated outdoor pickleball courts built in Durango. The construction of courts is in the draft master plan. There is no mention of pickleball in the 2010 master plan. People didn't play pickleball in Durango at that time. We want to raise money through grants and donations to build outdoor pickleball courts. To do so, we need a current Parks and Recreation master plan that addresses and demonstrates city support. As a citizen of Durango, I support many of the proposed elements of the draft master plan: Durango Mesa Park, Animus River Trail, and Three Springs Community Park. I just thank you.
Thank you. John Simpson, please. And then Mary, what happened?
Mayor Youssef, John Simpson, 1831 Crestwood Drive. Budget discussions this year have unfortunately gravitated into an unnecessary, complex discussion of the definition of capital projects and maintenance projects, and the intricacies of transferring money from one fund to the other fund. Staff has succeeded in diverting that tension of the minutia of budgeting instead of allowing council to focus on the basic policies that should guide budget preparation. It is now apparent that the three of you are prepared to allow continuation of the flawed system implemented by the prior city manager. The instructions that should have been given to staff is, one, the 2019 sales tax should be 100% addition to the streets to what was already spent on the streets. Two, carrying capital projects not in progress at the end of the year should cease. Only projects specifically approved by council should be allowed in 2020. And three, determining the compensation of city employees should be determined by comparing what non-city employees in Durango are, not what people in Boulder are. Kim and Barbara have explained the structural problem you're creating. I want to explain the loss of public trust that is occurring. At the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, discussion occurred on whether to treat the 2019 revenue as an addition to what has been spent and budgeted with the 2019 tax for streets. I'm sorry. One member quickly said, "I'm pretty sure that that's the way I thought the vote was." And I'm sure I believe most people thought that's the case, that you weren't gonna take this money and put it away somewhere else. It's likely that advisory member read the information sent to every single voter that said, "Yes, there's money in the general fund, but not enough." Most people expected the general fund to continue to support streets. Later, in the infrastructure meeting, the 2019 tax shuffle was explained, and the question was, "Well, where does the magic 2A come from in 10 years when this goes away?" That question was not answered. Furthermore, the vocal proponent of the improvements to Thomas Avenue, a gentleman, said, "I think the public's perception is that it was really to help beat up sidewalks and beat up streets." They thought the same thing I did possibly, that this 1A was to help get the sidewalks and streets straightened out because the operating expense now is from the general fund. The public thought that the general fund would support the streets and gave you their vote. Unless I remember when we spoke, when my letter of the edit went out, just because Rod is gone doesn't make this plan any less shady. Keep this simple. Minimize transfers from the temporary dedicated sales taxes to the general fund. The problem of losing the public trust is not easily fixed. Half the city has already had enough. Now you're losing the trust of the people who voted yes on 1A. Violating what the people thought they were voting for is inexcusable.
Thank you. Mary Oswald?
My name is Mary Oswald, and I live at 585 East 31st Street in Durango. And I'm here to urge the entire council to support the pedestrian bridge at 32nd Street. I live practically in view of where this bridge would be. My next-door neighbor's daughter was hit and almost killed at that intersection 25 years ago, and it has completely messed up their lives. And I want you to know that our entire neighborhood is behind this effort. And the big question that all our neighbors ask is, if this is funded by GoCo and the GoCo funds are there, why aren't we supporting it? Thank you.
So we're gonna ask, we think if there's anyone else that would like to join us in public participation who's here tonight. Okay, with that, then, we are gonna move on to our next agenda item. If you could pass this up just for me, please. That is agenda item number five. And we are gonna start with the presentation for city operations.
Do it in two. Madam Mayor, Liba Lloyd, Director of City Operations. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of who city operations are and what we do. So, city operations division is comprised of 42 committed civic employees and
So City Operations Division is comprised of 42 committed civic employees in nine distinct divisions. We have the Streets Department, which is comprised of street maintenance, snow and ice, street cleaning. We have Fleet Facilities and Warehouse, Risk Manager and Loss Control, and then Sustainable Services, which is trash recycling, recycling center, and Sustainability Coordinator. So the Streets Division is 15 staff members responsible for maintenance and operation of 83 centerline miles of road. This represents over a million and a half square yards of asphalt surface and approximately $90 million asset value. In Street Maintenance, in 2018, we completed 841 work orders. In 2019, year-to-date, we have completed 554 work orders. That number will probably top 1,000 at the end of the year. In 2018, we patched 990 potholes after a pretty significant winter. You can see that number went up significantly. We've patched, year-to-date, we've patched about 1,900 potholes, and that's an estimate of where we will finish up. The Snow and Ice Division, last year, we spent 3,800 hours plowing snow, and we removed 27,000 cubic yards of snow from the downtown business district and residential streets. Street cleaning, we swept about 13,000 miles in 2019 and removed 4,000 cubic yards of debris. If you can imagine that just remaining on the streets, that's 400 truckloads of material that is just out in the streets. This is leaves, sanding material, and other dirt and debris that is in the streets. So pretty big effort to keep the city clean. So Fleet Facilities and Warehouse, this is 15 employees comprised of custodians, mechanics, shop foremen, and warehouse staff. We maintain 305 pieces of equipment. We completed 2,033 work orders in 2018 and just short of 2,000 work orders year-to-date in 2019. And we are estimating that that number is probably going to be in the last two months, we'll have a lot more DI's come in, so that number's probably going to top 2,200 work orders in 2019. We maintain seven general fund buildings. That represents 77,000 square feet of improved facilities and almost 10 acres of property that we're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep on. And our warehouse maintains and tracks 25,000 pieces of inventory, and that represents a $375,000 asset value. This is all the things that we need to maintain: the equipment, toilet paper for the bathrooms, and printer paper. So it all comes through there. And then the warehouse, last in the warehouse, we process approximately 1,500 pieces of freight each year. This is small boxes like this from Amazon to huge truckloads of paint and other materials and supplies that we use for all the things that the city does day-to-day. So Risk Manager and Loss Prevention, in 2018, conducted 174 job site and safety inspections. That number is up slightly in 2019. We've done 184 job site and safety inspections. In 2018, we processed 50 property or workers' compensation claims. That number is up. Typically, you will see a bump in numbers after big winters. It's slick out there, and almost all of those increases are vehicle-on-vehicle crime, unfortunately. But we processed 66 property and workers' compensation claims in 2019. Sustainable Services, this is 11 staff members, manager, administrator, and equipment operators. This is a big one. We were just awarded the 2018 EcoGold Medal for Best Recycling Program outside the Front Range. This is a huge deal. We have, we were recognized as having the best diversion rates of any rural recycling program. And this is not just the city of Durango's staff. This is a compilation of all the recycling that happens, so all the other partners out there. But I will toot my staff's horn and say that a good portion of that comes from us. We divert a lot of material. We have a very robust recycling program. But you can see, we service just over 5,000 residential trash and recycling customers. We have 560 commercial trash and recycling customers. We offer service six days a week, Monday through Saturday. We work holidays. We work in snowstorms. We haul an average of approximately 10,000 tons of trash each year, but we divert and process an average of almost 4,000 tons of recycling material. That's a five-year average, and in the last two years, we've been over 4,000 tons of recycled materials. So this is just a quick snapshot of what City Operations does. This does not include utilities. I'll be back to talk about utilities, but I didn't want to take up too much of your time. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, thank you. And if you could, as always, share that presentation. That's great information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to Parks and Recreation, please. Ms. Metz.
So good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here to talk to you about the Durango Parks and Recreation Department. Kathy Metz, Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like to share with you how we enrich lives every day. So first, talk about a little bit, before we get into some of the details, what are the benefits of Parks and Recreation in Durango? And what do we do for the community? We create healthy lifestyles. We preserve and conserve environmental resources, foster economic vitality, and build community that enhances our quality of life and really the reason why people want to live here. In administration of Parks and Recreation in Durango, we have 38 full-time employees and over 500 part-time and seasonal employees, and we serve a documented number of 545,000 participants every year. So this does not include the number of people that just drop in and visit our parks or use our trails. These are people that actually come, and we can document their paid service for our services that we provide. We received national accreditation in 2015 from the National Accreditation by the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies, and we've maintained that since that time. It's a marked distinction that recognizes commitment to the highest level of service to the community. We also received the National Gold Medal Award, which is the highest agency award acknowledged by the National Recreation and Park Association. One agency in the entire United States is selected annually by population, and we are in a classification that is for 30,000 or less. It demonstrates the excellence in Parks and Recreation management by the department. In Parks, we have quality management and maintenance of parks, open space, and trails. We have over 300 acres of developed parks in Durango. We also manage the 8.4 miles of the Animus River in town and over 41 miles of road right-of-way. In the forestry area in the Parks Division, we are Tree City USA, and we've had that designation from the National Arbor Day Foundation for 39 consecutive years. We maintain over 10,000 trees in the parks and along the street right-of-way, and we have a community forest management plan that guides us on the expansion of the urban forest as well as tells us about the value of our trees in terms of the people that came earlier today about the importance of the environment. I think that's really important to our community in terms of the carbon sequestration and shade that trees provide. And you all know the benefits of trees in our community. We have a cemetery at Green Mount Cemetery, and we provide end-of-life services for members of our community. It's about a 40-acre facility. And we also have the historic Animus City Cemetery that's no longer receiving burials at the current time, but has a lot of interesting history at that location. Lake Nighthorse is a regional destination of just under 2,000 acres, and of that, about 1,500 acres is water. And all of our capital improvements at Lake Nighthorse is done very carefully in terms of our capital and operations to minimize the disturbance to natural and cultural resources on-site. We had an economic impact study of the recreational use at Lake Nighthorse, and at full build-out, the visitation is expected to generate just under $8 million annually in Durango and 12 million, over $12 million in the local economic input/output of La Plata County. We have over 3,000 acres of open space in Durango, and we provide responsible stewardship of that natural resource. We like to promote the conservation values, which includes the view shed protection, ecological stability, wildlife habitat, and recreation. We have about 15 miles of hard-surface trails and over 96 miles of natural-surface trails, and we know that over 90% of Durango residents use our city trails annually. In the community events area, we provide quality services to primarily nonprofit organizations that like to provide community events. More recently is a picture of the Veterans Day Parade, which is on Main Street. And upcoming is Snow Down. So these are the type of events. There's over 225 of them each year that we make sure that we can work with those event organizers to make sure there's a minimal disruption of city services. And we also promote tourism and activities that draw people downtown as well as we organize and put together the Fourth of July celebration for the community. In Recreation, we provide community recreation services for over 450,000 participants each year, and we provide fiscal sustainability by achieving the 90% cost-recovery goal. We promote health and wellness as well as social connectivity in our community. The Durango Community Recreation Center is a 71,500-square-foot facility. It's a full-service recreation center, and it serves now over 1,300 participants a day. The Durango Gymnastics Facility is just under 12,000 square feet, and gymnastics provides an interesting combination of ability to learn balance and life skills, so you have courage to maybe venture where you might not be able to go otherwise. The program provides abilities for very young toddlers all the way up to adults and serves over 8,200 participants annually. Chapman Hill is a 38-acre facility that includes an in-town ski hill, a 33,600-square-foot ice rink and pavilion, and serves just under 21,000 participants annually. Recreation programs are a broad range from infants to seniors, and we provide over 300 unique programs annually to members of our community. And that's just a snapshot of Durango Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much. Anything from Council? Thanks for the information. It's very interesting. Okay, moving on to Review and Consent Agenda. Can you please read those for us, Ms. Phillips?
You've been. So items 6.1 through 6.6 are approval of minutes for August and November of 2019. 6.1 is the special study session, August 14. 6.2, the special study session, August 21. 6.3, special study session, August 28. 6.4, the special meeting, November 5. 6.5, special study session, November 5. And 6.6, the regular meeting of November 5. Items 6.7 and 6.8 are discussion and possible action items. 6.7 concerns Resolution R.201945, adopting the performance evaluation process for the city manager. 6.8 concerns the submission of an Energy Impact Assistant Fund Grant Application to support an energy performance contract. Item 6.9 is a request for public hearing with a proposed date of December 3, 2019, to consider the granting of an easement to Roger and Patricia Singer to install underground electric, communications, and gas services at 1074 East Fifth Avenue. Items 6.10 through 6.14 are final approval of ordinances. 6.10 is Ordinance O.201921, repealing and reenacting Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Durango related to alcoholic beverages and declaring effective date. 6.11 is Ordinance O.201922, amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Durango, the Land Use and Development Code, by the amendment of Sections, Tables, Definitions, and by amending Chapter 6, Commercial Design Guide, and Chapter 9, Downtown Overlay District Design Guidelines of the said land use and development code as set forth herein and declaring effective date. 6.12 is Ordinance O.201923, amending Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Durango by the addition of a fire-impact fee to be imposed on development requiring a city building permit and declaring effective date. 6.13, Ordinance O.201924, amending Section 25-114 of Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordenses of the City of Durango, purposes of modifying sewer rates for residential, commercial, and industrial users of the wastewater system and clarifying the categories of users and declaring an effective date. And Item 6.14 is Ordinance O.201925, amending portions of Section 25-30 of Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordenses of the City of Durango for purposes amending the rates for outside city users and clarifying rates for irrigation accounts and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much. Do we have any councils that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, can I just bring a point up? On the materials that were distributed on Tuesday, there was an item on the consent agenda that discussed the Santa Rita Park and a possible appropriation from that, and I had asked that that be removed from the consent agenda, but I do not see it on this agenda.
That item has been removed from the agenda and is going back to the Infrastructure Advisory Board for discussion based on a conversation and recommendation that was brought, that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board brought forward. So instead of bringing it to council numerous times, staff pulled it from the agenda so we can bring you all the information at once.
Okay. Would anyone like to remove an item from the agenda? Excellent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf?
Yes.
All right, moving on then to public hearings. We have one quasi-judicial hearing tonight. This is an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input into our decision-making process. The format is intentionally organized to ensure fairness and transparency for all parties involved. This does require a legal process in which facts and opinions are presented to council, who serve as unbiased decision-makers. The applicant has the burden of proof in these hearings. We welcome all public testimony. We ask that it be limited to three minutes. City staff will present the staff report. We will then open the public hearing, have a presentation by the applicant or developer. We'll have public testimony, and then questions from council and response from city staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is for preliminary plat review for 30th at Main, 2977 Main Avenue. Sorry, the map's a little fuzzy, but I use this map because it is 2019 map. This is currently a building that is under construction. There are two buildings there that have been demolished, and this building is now being constructed as a mixed-use project. It is in the mixed-use arterial zone district. It does about the existing neighborhood 2 zone district. So it's right there on the corner of 30th and Main. So these are the existing conditions. This is what is proposed, and it is currently under construction. They're hoping that will be all dried in by January, and then they'll start some of the tenant finishes. The Zia, as you can see right there from the proposed sign, Zia will be in here as well as a bar upstairs. There will also be an optometrist and a dentist as well. So those three uses are the ones that are being proposed. So the preliminary plat is to divide these into three condos so that these can be sold off individually. So the optometrist will own theirs, and the dentist theirs, and then Zia theirs. So this is a preliminary plat for that proposal. It is reviewed according to the Land Use and Development Code 6-3-6. Staff has found that it does meet this. It is not residential. And it is a conforming structure because it is under construction and has received all the building permits. The structure does comply with all plumbing, electrical, and fire codes, and there will be master water meters installed for each building cluster, so for those three separate units. As mentioned, staff does recommend approval of the 30th at Main Commercial Condominium Preliminary Condominium Plat with the finding that the Commercial Condominium Plat meets the evaluation criteria of the Land Use and Development Code and is subject to the following conditions: one, to include all plat language, plat notes, and easement dedications determined appropriate by city staff on the final plat; all written, verbal, and graphic representations of the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval, and all comments provided by city staff shall be addressed prior to recordation of the condominium plat. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public hearing? Any, I can't see, but I don't think there's anyone to speak. I think we're good. Okay. Do we have a presentation from the applicant or developer?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Okay, you can always come back at the end if we have questions. All right, so no public testimony. Questions from council? Well, shall I make a motion? Maybe at least tell me about the public part.
The public part?
Yes.
Yeah, so there is a park. You can sort of see it here along the south edge. So there is a park that is being proposed there. The design of it is being funded by the Durango Creates Grant for that design, so it is going to be a public-private kind of partnership to allow some of the events. Maybe the Animus Night Bazaar will go there, maybe other such events, but yeah, to really create an interaction with the public realm and the private. That was something that was very important to the developers, especially along North Main.
Really excited about it. Any other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I need to recommend approval of the proposed Preliminary Condominium Plat, creating the potential for separate condominium ownership interests in the three commercial units in the building located at 2977 Main Avenue, with the finding that the proposal complies with the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code, presented testimony, submitted documentation, and conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to item number 11.1, discussion and possible action concerning the award of contract to successful executive search firm.
This item flows from council's activity last Tuesday in conducting interviews. The council, I understand, reduced the number of applicants down to two. So, and council requested that this item be put on the agenda tonight for action, or at least potential action. So that's the background on that. So it's up to council to take action at this point if you desire to do so.
Mayor, I have just one note I wanted to address to the council. Due to my travel schedule, as you all know, I was not able to attend the session where you narrowed this down to two candidates. And as such, my plan this evening is to, is to try and stay out of the vote if I can. I imagine you can reach consensus. I'll listen to your discussion. If for some reason a vote is needed to move forward on the issue, and you're tied 2 to 2, I may consider voting, just so we can continue to move forward with the process. But otherwise, I'll probably make some on this issue.
Great, thank you.
Is that okay with you, Dirk?
True call.
Say that, all right.
Thank you, Councilor Bateen. Discussion, motion from council. Thoughts?
I'd like to share some thoughts first, and then I'm willing to entertain a motion, but if anybody else wants to add thoughts. First, I thought it was a robust process, and I thought the, for the public, we had 14 applicants. We went through reviewing them all, and then a rating system that we pursued, and then from those, looked at four, interviewed, had at least half-hour interviews with each of those consulting firms, and tried to have those via video conference. So, and then, and then from there, we narrowed it down to two, and had the HR department contact their references. So I think that just for the public to know that process. I was very pleased with the two finalists. I do believe that when I went back and reread the information and I looked at issues, I have a stronger leaning towards Slavin, and if we need to go in that discussion, I'm happy to provide my rationale for that.
Any other comments?
I will accept to say that it was a great process, and so thank you to HR and also to finance for making it all happen.
You know, each of us has invested probably eight to 10 to 12 hours of time to select the headhunter, which will ultimately bring us candidates for the city manager position. So I look forward to those discussions and the time involved in making the correct and appropriate decision for that person to take leadership role in our city. Either of these candidates are in the business to do this for us and take us through this, shepherd us through this process, and I think neither of them has a mistake out of all 14 that were submitted. These are top-tier candidates, so the other being Peckham and Marshall.
McKinney.
McKinney, thank you, and Peckham and McKinney. And I'd like to hear the thoughts that distinguish your elevation of Slavin to the, above Peckham and McKinney.
So should, can I make a motion?
Sure. Before you do, I could just give you a little bit of information that I did receive up at CML, at the mayor's summit. I did get some direct feedback from the current mayor of Aspen, who they use, the second firm, Peckham and McKinney, and they were actually not successful in finding a city manager in their search, for a number of reasons that he went into, and he, but it was, it was useful information for me to talk to him about that process and what it looked like for them. He was definitely disappointed in the fact that they went through the entire process and were not ultimately successful. And so that was just in some interest, I thought I would share that. I do think both candidates were very strong, and I would, I would support Slavens as well. I think that I could work with them, and with, really with either of them. I think that a lot of it has to do with our, the work that we're about to engage in together.
So I don't have an exact wording, but I would like to make a motion.
There was a motion on the, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, where is it?
I'd like to just comment that that's excellent input, and that's a really good update, so thank you.
So it is recommended that council take action by motion to select Slavin and Associates, I believe it's called, to act as the executive search firm to assist the city council in recruiting a city manager, and that staff be authorized to issue a notice of award and to negotiate a contract with that firm on the terms set forth in their proposal, subject to additional terms and conditions discussed in this meeting, and that the mayor may be authorized to sign that contract on behalf of the city council.
Do we have seconds?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Sure. I'd like to just explain why I, with two good candidates, one rose for me above the other. First of all, and I'll do a little bit of contrast and comparison for me. Slavin has 850 placements, many of them county and city experience. They seek community input from the start, and they seek council guidance throughout the process. After 30 days of a placement, they meet with the city manager to discuss goals and levels and kind of how that's going, and every one of their searches has resulted in selection. They have Colorado references, and they provide a two-year guarantee on their services. They also interview their candidates in the work setting, which I think is really interested, and they do their background checks early in the process, and their fees was about $24,575. Peckham and McKinney have done about 200 city manager recruitments. They do have Colorado experience. Oh, sorry, sorry. Slavin has about a 95% success ratio of staying five years or longer. Peckham and McKenzie, 89. Their, in the, Peckham and McKenzie, they do their background check later in the process, though for an extra fee, we could do that. They have a one-year guarantee, and they were involved in the, originally they rose in my estimate because they were involved in the Aspen city manager search. The other thing I didn't add is that with Slavin, we would have three people working with us, and with Peckham's McKinney, there would be only one, and that concerns me. Should one person get ill, that one person get ill, have something come up, I think that I would, and I, we have the assurance that the principal of Slavin is involved, but there's also support around that. So that's my rationale.
Any other comments? Discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Stane.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
And Mayor Yussit?
Yes.
Introduction to ordinances, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, this is ordinance O. 2019-26. It's a ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts, and for the purposes set forth below for the City of Durango, Colorado, for the 2020 budget year. As we discussed during the study session prior to this meeting, it's necessary for the city to adopt this ordinance in final form before we can approve the mill levy. That's due on the 15th of December. So first reading tonight would allow for, second reading on the 3rd of December, and allow for the approval of the mill levy also on the 3rd of December. I will point out that I think that Mayor, Council Nowsworthy said that it didn't show up on her iPad, but the ordinance was actually loaded yesterday, so I hope all of you saw that and have it. I have it on my computer.
It wasn't loading earlier. We all were having the same problem. It's theoretically been fixed since then.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Well, it did come up on my, on my machine. So to the extent that we need to go make copies of it, if we need to, we could do that. Does everyone have that? Okay. We want to see copies. Okay, well, maybe we need to.
Could you also address the, the language that we talked about adding as a result of the prior study session?
Yes. One of the things that was discussed at the study session was the potential need to make changes or fine-tune the numbers that are shown in this ordinance between first reading and second reading. Although it doesn't happen very often, the process does contemplate that there can be amendments in an ordinance between first reading and second reading, so that opportunity would avail itself if additional, again, fine-tuning is done to these numbers prior to the December 3rd meeting for second reading. And if someone wants to include that in a motion, that would be fine. I do recommend, staff recommends that due to the timeframes involved, that council approve this ordinance O. 2019-26 on first reading tonight. And again, we can make copies if you want to do that. Or I can read the numbers even.
We have, I have it.
Okay.
I think we have it.
Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-26, O. 2019-26, with the amended language that Dirk just mentioned.
I would second that motion.
Further council discussion? Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
No.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
No.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes.
Moving on to interim city manager report, city status update. Amber Blake?
Yes, so I have a financial report this evening for September financial report, and then I just wanted to let you know that I will have the October financial report. We're looking at December 3rd for that and November on December 17th. This is September. That's where we're at. We haven't done September, so I have that for you. And then we also have the third quarter, I have the third quarter CIP report as well.
And we'll, as always remind you, love to get those as soon as possible, next couple of days. That would be great.
All right. So this is the monthly snapshot for September of 2019.
It's a little bit like.
So everybody out in the hall could hear at the time, yes.
Oh. So you will receive this in an email. It will be posted online, so that you have this, and it's accessible to the public. It will go online tomorrow. So when we look at our September sales tax collection, we saw an increase of September, over September 18. I would like to note that this is actual over actual, not compared to budget, so we are comparing actuals here. And September 18 to September 19, our collections were up by 7.1%. Again, September collections represent all sales or collections from August monthly filings, so this is still summer sales. And then our sales tax collections were up September 18 by a total of 4% over September of 18. So this, when we're looking at this, this is broken out a little bit different, because you can't compare 18 to 19 with all of our sales taxes together, because we have the new half-cent tax. So until April of next year, you'll see this report with the 3%, and then the 5, half a percent broken out. So we have our sales and use tax, and then our lodgers tax. Our lodgers tax is up 16.6%. Use tax is up 4%, and then again, our actual increase year, or month over month from each year, 7.1% increase.
Do you have the year-to-date numbers for that also?
I asked our, I asked Diane Gersh for that, so you will get that in the email. We'll be adding it to this, but I didn't have it when this started.
Okay, thank you.
So, we, well, and we do, and it's right here. So the, for the general fund sales tax history, we are looking here at just the city's sales tax of 2%, not the dedicated revenue. So this is the 2% that goes into the general fund. I asked for the whole thing, but.
Yeah, because the year-to-date would be September, not now, so.
Well, right, that's this.
Yeah, but then you're adding into that total, you're adding October, November, and December, so you can't compare.
You can, right. So we're up 7.1%. That's showing here, it's the consistent throughout. When we look at the trends, we are trending above, and it falls in line with our month to month to month. We haven't had any catastrophic events this year, knock on wood. We will not be having any, but you can see when we get into lodgers tax here towards the end, there is a little bit of a change when we're looking at last year and the 416 fire. We do have the report broken out by SIP code. I wanted to make sure that you had the information about outside, other Durango. So when we look at this report, they're by zone. We have a map, but the outside city limits is where you'll find your online retailers' sales tax.
That's only the state portion, correct?
And not correct.
So we're also collecting.
We are collecting.
What they're, what the groups that are doing it voluntarily.
Correct, voluntary remission.
Right.
So that is 10.67% of our sales tax, so online retailers and retailers that are selling to individuals within the city limits that have their base business outside of the city limits of Durango. So that's 10 and a half percent of our total sales tax. When we look at our lodgers tax, so we're here over in September, we're at the dark blue line right here. You can see the 2% lodgers tax. We are up this year 16.6%. Again, this is, sounds like a huge increase, but when you look back at 2018, we did have the impacts of the 416 fire, so it's kind of more appropriate to look at the 2017 number. So at $142,000 and change in 2017 for September, we're at $146,000 and change for September of 2019. So we're still trending in a positive direction, but it's really not when you're apples to apples with no 416 fires. Not quite the 16.6% increase, but we're still trending up. The other thing that we've added to this report are the capital projects of $5,000 or more, and I have these broken out for you.
$500,000?
These are $500,000 or more. This is not the full report. This is just the breakout that we did for the monthly snapshot. So when we look at these, I wanted to call out a couple of projects. So you can see that in this year-to-date actuals, there's a couple of projects that have zero, so no money has been spent so far, and I thought it would be important to touch base on some of those. So the Florida raw water line replacement, their current, current efforts underway at the headgate structure with the backup supply plan for the Florida pipeline, and that needs to be taken care of before this project can get started. So this is a project that is waiting for the, the project that comes before it to finish up before we can get moving. When you look at open space acquisition, we touched on this a little bit today, but again, the money that's appropriated in each year occasionally can be held back, accrue the money, and then a large purchase can be made, which is more than the annual appropriation that does roll into that project fund.
Amber, would you, this is helpful. Do you have capacity to also provide us with the information on the date it was appropriated? Not right now, but in future?
Yes.
Thank you. I think it's helpful to know how long.
It's been out there.
Is that the entire fund balance? I mean, so there's $500,000 allocated every year?
This year there, yes.
So there's only $700,000 in it?
Yes, that would be year-to-date budget. That's what's in that budget code.
What did we buy? Because it was 2.5 million.
I don't know. I'll have to double check with Kathy.
There's been no purchases that I'm aware of.
Yeah, but no. So that could just be the budgeted amount. I don't know. We can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Open space acquisition, okay. Then we have the limited storage lift spaceship, lift station vaults. This is tied to the lift station replacement project that is moving forward. So that would be this one, 2031. So 2031 needs to be completed. So the preliminary plan for the Lightner Creek lift station has been submitted to CDPHNE, and the plan for the upper remodel lift station is currently in development with Du Barry Engineering. So this project combined with 3030, 2031, which is that guy right here, will be implemented. So both of the new lift stations have to include emergency storage, and those are the notes that you'll get in your CIP third quarter report. River City Hall, the Swinging Bridge Art Trail, that one is moving along fine. Ridge's Basin Water Treatment Plant Main Extension is on here, and there's been no progress on this. There's an RFP for preliminary engineering that needs to be completed, and that's Project 1112, which is also on this list. No, it isn't. It's smaller than $500,000. It's in the other document. So I'm not sure how council would like to have this information. I don't think that it's useful to run through everything, single CIP project in front of the public on TV because it would take a long time, and I'm not quite sure that that would be useful. So I have the document, and we will be posting that online tomorrow, and that's the third quarter report. I will make a request to staff that we include a column for when each of these projects are appropriated. And I would like some direction from council on the whole as to what you would like to see in your monthly financial update related to capital projects.
So I appreciate this. I think it's important to show it to the public. I would think, as I mentioned, having the date, it was original approval. And I also think you should highlight those that not only are at zero, but if you go back up some, some of them are like a 800, I'm looking at the Swinging Bridge, you've got an $800,000 appropriation, and does that mean 26 has been spent?
26,000 at the top.
Sorry, yes. Year-to-date encumbered, and then the year-to-date available is...
So you're looking at 50,000 out of a $800,000 project has been spent. So I think it would, you know, use the discretion, not just the zero expenditures, but some that have a significant, that low end, or insignificant, maybe is what I should say. We're not really looking at completing that in any time soon.
Okay, that sounds great. So we will make those changes. Thank you for bearing with me. I'd like to just make sure that we're getting the right information out there in an understandable fashion. I do have two other questions for the council related to future meetings that relate to my report. And that would be, we will need to schedule a meeting for your evals with the judge and the city attorney, and typically that is done in December. So just as a heads up, you, if you can, we'll send some information out to council and then get those scheduled. And then the other one is, is that in order to move forward with making sure that our audit happens on time, I would like to receive approval from council to move forward with issuing an RFP for an auditor, and that will be council's selection of the auditor, but we need to make sure we can hit those procurement timelines. So, take your consensus on that. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Is that all?
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council reports and actions. Counselors?
I have, I have an item. If I can talk about, I had an opportunity as your mayor pro tem to travel well outside my comfort zone. I was asked to speak at the transgender day of remembrance last Sunday evening in recognition of over 400 tragic murders of transgender folks, that's their term, that were very visually and eloquently discussed by members of our community at the universal, at the Unitarian Church. I reiterated the city's policy of civility first and discussed the training and commitment of our law enforcement and every department of government to provide an accepting and inclusive culture in our community. At the end of the ceremony, the attendees signed the official transgender flag, which is this beautiful flag right in front of us here, to be displayed at Fort Lewis College. Dr. Jude Harrison offered me another flag, this flag, which I have signed and will ask and or encourage my fellow counselors to add their signatures to be, to be offered and displayed to our community relations commission for their events. So this will be in our, in our office and add your signature at your will and at your convenience for use by our community relations commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors?
So I, Counselor Niswory and I attended a court session in this room the other day with Judge Casey presiding, and it was very interesting. One of the things beside his very, very, I don't even know what word to use, it's an amazing way he handles people. It's incredible. But beside that, I also realized I need to pay more attention to my driving and my bike riding. I don't want to end up sitting right down there and talking to the judge. It was a very, very interesting experience. I'm sure Barbara will have more to add, and it was very, I learned a lot, and I just respect Mr. Judge Casey very much. He did a great job. And then one other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, we had the plastic bag people here earlier, and one of the things that I completely support that they have been doing is making alternative to plastic bags. I love the idea, and I was given one. This is a t-shirt, and what I love about it is if you notice, it's a Superman with Durango underneath, right? So we're super Durango, and what's coming out of the top but a snowflake? And I just think this is fabulous. So this is my alternative to plastic, and I'm very excited about it.
I attended a couple of meetings recently along with Councilmember Brokey. I attended the transgender day of remembrance with my husband, and it was extremely moving. And I just felt that it's important for us as a city to be present for those kind of ceremonies, and so I appreciated that. I was also attended the Climate Cities, which the mayor pro tem also spoke at along with others from LPEA. And there is a growing enthusiasm and commitment to renewable energy and to addressing climate change. And so I just, again, see that strongly in the community. I also attend, went to here, to watch Judge Casey in his duties, and I'll be going back a couple more times before that evaluation process because each day is different. Mondays are one kind of activity, Wednesdays are another, and Friday is even a different kind of day. So I will do my best to get in there and be able to provide a, an appropriate evaluation, having witnessed his activities.
Excellent.
I want to just thank the Parks and Rec Board for allowing me to attend by phone. That was a first for me with them, and I was able to contribute to the meeting. We discussed a lot, obviously, things that we've all been discussing as well before you, with that, about the budget and reconciliation. And then the chamber board meeting this morning, and just wanted to bring to the attention of everyone their eggs and issues. They're sponsoring Thursday, December 5th at the Doubletree Hotel from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. And it's on moving the needle on health care costs, and it's an update from the Southwest Health Alliance and Peak Health Alliance. This is a group that's formed by leaders and community members, healthcare providers, insurance representatives throughout the community in an attempt to lower health care costs in Southwest Colorado. They'll be giving an update on their progress, and I would encourage everyone to attend. It's a very interesting concept they have going. It's worked well in other places in Colorado.
Excellent. Couple things on mine. Mr. Nelson, would it be appropriate to get an update on 5G?
Actually, we have been spending some time as staff looking at the 5G, and I will commit as a staff to continue to do that. I don't have a formal report. Generally speaking, I've been engaged with a special counsel that represents the group that the city is a member of, a consortium. His, Ken Philman, who is a very well-known telecommunications expert in the legal field, and preliminarily indicated to me in the strongest of terms that the city does not have the authority to impose moratorium, but we will continue to explore. And I'm aware of the communications the council's getting about this topic, so I will commit along with the rest of staff to continue to explore those issues and report back formally, but I don't have a formal report for you tonight.
But you'll keep us informed as well?
I will do that.
But I appreciate that update on the moratorium.
So, so that was the question, was on whether or not we could do a moratorium? Is that, that was...
Based on the best advice that I've been able to get, because I will confess that I'm not an expert in these telecommunications matters are quite complicated, but the information that I've been given is that because the, in some of the moratoriums that you hear about or in other states, we have a specific state law in Colorado that ties our hands largely to restrict the use of certain rights ways for certain purposes. So on that basis, their advice is that we don't have the authority to impose moratorium. That doesn't mean we don't have any authority at all, but generally speaking, I think, again, the opinion that I've received is that we don't have the authority to do that, but we can explore any other options that might be available to us, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, thank you. And Ms. Blake, I'm wondering if you can give us an update. There was, there's been some discussion around email policy to advisory boards if it comes to city council.
Oh, right. So we have a process in place where when we, when council receives an email and we see it, then it's forwarded to, so let's say it's about the 32nd Street Bridge. That email is then sent to the Parks and Recreation staff to be put into the public record on either, whatever the topic is. And so there's running comment, public comment logs based on whatever issue is being commented on by department. So there was a request to send a specific email to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and so during our mayor's meeting, we had a little conversation about what the current process is and how the boards receive that information. So what we're doing now is we're compiling all of it, and then it'll go forward to the board when the board is discussing the items, rather than inundating the board's email inboxes with all of the emails that council is receiving, and that way we're also being fair, because then all of the emails are going in one document versus here's 55 emails on whatever subject, or saying, oh, this is a good one, let's send this one on, because we want to make sure that the boards, if the boards are making recommendations to council, they have the information.
Amber, that would be inclusive of comments that we, any of us receive individually or in aggregate?
If you receive an individual comment, that's just to you. Dean gets a comment. If you don't send it to me and forward to me, then I can't send it to staff because I don't know you've received it.
And therefore it doesn't become...
And therefore...
Public record.
I mean, it's available through a CORO request if it's sent to your city email address.
No, we want to get to the right spot, yeah.
But if it's just, but if it's sent to the city council...
So we probably should talk about this a little bit more, but there's, has been a conversation that the staff person for the, for a city advisory board did not forward an email or more than one email that they received concerning a project that the advisory board was working on to that advisory board because it was sent to them personally. And I think there's more to this conversation than just what we're talking about.
Right, and I think that it's with you and Barbara, am I correct on the kind of subcommittee group working on boards and questions?
Yes, yes.
So it would be, or advisory board, sorry. It may be a pertinent conversation, and I'm assuming that that'll likely be part of your conversation to say, add that to the list, and it's, how does that communication work? Because then we can make sure that our processes as a staff are communicating under the appropriate expectation.
And it's fair and consistent, and we have established protocols, so that would be great to add that to the list. And I think you, so you mentioned there's a public log, correct? That where they're all stored?
So there's logs. So if I, if you ask me for comments on Eighth and College, then I would contact Sarah and ask for the public comment log, and there you go.
I think this is extremely important. It also brings up the larger question of all communications, email communication specifically amongst ourselves and amongst our constituents, and, and making sure that becomes public record and is moved on to the appropriate board, staff, whatever, and, and it's done in an appropriate manner that's not, doesn't become a serial meeting. And so I think we need to kind of revisit that, and I'll be asking for that to be placed on a study session next year, I guess, at this point.
I'm a speaker of the boards and commission.
Well, I'll propose it next week, and people can weigh in.
That, but he's talking about a different situation.
Oh, email communication.
Talking about communications.
Yeah, just an overall communications update.
To your point, you and I had a conversation with Mr. Nelson about snail mail, because we do receive snail mail, and I don't know that we have a process for that, so...
I understand there is a process, but I can't describe what it is right now, and I think that, because I spoke to Karen briefly about that, because she's the one who handles that, but I will confess that the process of time, I forgot to get back to her and ask her. So I will do that, but, but I understand there is a process that, that happens when the mail comes in, it gets opened, it gets, you know, copied and then distributed. So maybe Amber knows more about it than I do, but I just neglected to get back to her and ask. So I know you raised that question.
Maybe we could just add it to the conversation that Dean wants to have, since it's about communication.
Yeah, and we can add that to my suggestion next week. Thank you.
Well, I am, I have a few more updates if you guys are done. Just can't, on council reports and actions before we move into future potential agenda items. Sorry, I'm so sorry that I missed some of these events that took place due to travel myself, the diversity. I'm sorry I missed that event. But I did travel up to the CML Mayor's Summit, which was great, in Denver. I think they had some really excellent breakout sessions on effective meetings and the appointee evaluation process, which I, I felt very comfortable contributing to that conversation. Team building with councils, strategies for, around affordable housing, and we were able to add to that as well with our recent Lytech funding for, for affordable housing. So it was a really great opportunity. I had lunch with Kevin Ballmer, and, who is the executive director of CML, and it was just a really nice opportunity to get out and talk with other communities about issues they're facing, and I may be actually very thankful to be in Durango because some of the issues that some of the larger communities are facing are tough for council. So it was really interesting. Couple other things, I wasn't sure if anyone had information on the public comment for e-bikes this Wednesday?
Well, I'm attending the meeting.
And where is it? It's at 5 o'clock? 5 o'clock at Rec Center. Can you tell just a bit about that?
So it's a joint board meeting, and there'll be public, there'll be a board meeting, and then there'll be public conversation as far as I understand, right? 5 to 6 is the board meetings?
So 4 o'clock is the multimodal board meeting, and that will be held at the Rec Center.
Okay.
5 o'clock is the joint board meeting. That will be held at the Rec Center in the large room, and then at, immediately following the joint board meeting, there will be the Parks and Recreation, no, natural.
I think, I thought it was an open, I thought it was a public comment meeting after.
A public comment meeting. There's three, three meetings in a row, all at the Rec Center.
Start at 6, the public comment week, okay.
I think, well, you...
Okay. The e-bike meet, the joint e-bike meeting's at 5.
Okay, because I think that's important, lots of conversation around that. And then we have a 416 recovery celebration tomorrow night, which is going to be a really nice opportunity. It's Wednesday night at the Strater Hotel, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and it's an opportunity to honor our community heroes who, who led their teams in fighting the fire and, and serving our community, and also to talk about our recovery and restoration efforts on the ground today that's going in place. And we have quite a few local heroes that we will be recognizing from the city of Durango, as well as the... as well as La Plata County, and guest speaker Rob Powell, who was the type 1 captain, section chief. So, that's going to be a really great event tomorrow night at Strater Hotel. And that's all I had, so let's move into future potential agenda items. Does anyone have anything?
Sure, I have a couple. First of all, I'm going to be pretty much out of commission for the next 10 days, though I will be taking emails and phone calls, so since I can't go to the multimodal advisory board meeting, to which I'm a liaison, I've asked Councilor Baxter to go and, in my stud and represent me there. So, one, I'd like to ask for a study session on Polastics sometime in the new year.
That was on my list as well.
I think that we've got a great demonstration, I think that 1,200, and I appreciate the community effort around that. The second one is, I think it was Kathleen Barrett made a comment about a resolution or the city council engaging with them and also with ICE, and I'd like to learn more about this. I don't know if it's a study session, or if several of us go and actually chat and report back, but I think we have a responsibility to look into that, and I just don't know the correct process. I'd like to also, there's a couple of things. One of the first comments, and Dirk knows this, and so I'm going to bring this up, is one of the first things I asked of both the city attorney and the city manager was that we didn't have a whistleblower policy, and I have worked in other places where we did, and so, in the, in conversation with Mr. Nelson, we kind of came back with, it would really require council direction to pursue that. And I can say there are templates that exist, I, in nonprofits that I serve on, we have a, we have a whistleblower policy, and so I think that's particularly important that we think about, and to that extent, and I have a few more items, is, I don't know about the rest of city council, but I did receive a, a letter, and it was unsigned, but it did make some accusations, and I don't know how to proceed, and I take it that it's unsigned in part because they, I'm assuming that there's not a whistleblower kind of possibility. So, I'm not certain how to proceed with this, and I would seek counsel from, I don't know if anyone else received the same letter, but I.
I think we all did, because I think it came through our mail and was copied to all of us, through the snail mail.
So, I would like some guidance from either the mayor, or the mayor and the city attorney, or something of what might be an appropriate response.
Did you see the letter, Mr. Nelson?
I, I did.
I gave him a copy, yeah.
I didn't see it, yeah, I didn't see it initially, but I've seen it since, so.
I would have a tendency to want to defer to you on that type of.
The only thing I could suggest is that we have some staff follow-up, again, this is something that sort of needs some direction, but it's possible, I think, to have some low-level investigation in the nature, just following up a little bit and reporting back. I don't, I don't have any other specific suggestions on it, this is unusual kind of situation, so.
Unusual, I just feel as though we have to have some action that looks into it, some we should perform, at least that would be my own thought, that you can't just completely ignore it.
Perhaps the interim city manager and I can discuss some options and.
That would be great.
Good.
That would be helpful.
So, also on my agenda is a possible site, a discussion about a possible site for homeless camps, this is in follow-up to our joint meeting with the county commissioners. And then finally, in the new year, and I think it might require some staff direction, I'd like to look at contingency fund best practices and capital improvement projects best practices. I think it's always important to learn what the industry proposes and what others are doing, and I think that might be helpful for all of us.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I have one more, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. When we met with the Judge Casey, and then, again, this would involve possibly directing the city attorney, he had a suggestion of looking at the possibility of decriminalizing some of our ordinances, due to the jails, in particularly being overflowing. So, I think that might be a discussion between you and the, and the judge, but I can't necessarily direct that.
I will say that he and I and prosecutors have had this ongoing discussion for quite some time. Some municipalities are moving toward that for a variety of reasons, so it may be that you wouldn't want to decriminalize everything, but there's certainly some things that could be done. So, that would be a project, I think, for the new year, we would go through that process, but certainly explore that idea.
Excellent. And I'm just going to, can I just follow up to Councilor Knowsworth's list? What I was thinking, I was looking at Amber, Ms. Blake, I think we should get another updated calendar list for the new year, and I think it might be helpful for us to possibly talk about scheduling a, a, a study session at the beginning of the new year where we prioritize.
Thank you.
And I've been involved in those discussions in the past with past councils, where we have four quadrants, and we, we organize our schedule accordingly, and I think that's going to be imperative for us to do that, because I think we have committed to, to try to stop with the double meeting headers, and I think, Amber, you had information on that that I think you should share?
I did.
Because I think it's pretty impressive, the work we've done, and so, we want to get back on track with a regular schedule.
May I clarify, I'm not asking for a whistleblower study session at all, I think the city attorney just needs consensus from us and direction to pursue looking into that, so it's not a study I'm looking at, I just.
I think it's very important that, I was speaking with someone yesterday, as a matter of fact, and the fact that we don't have a whistleblower process, they were astonished.
I would, I would agree too, so perhaps if you could just look into that, if you figure out the best way to respond to that.
Yeah, we just need to.
But there still is some other good ideas that we should get.
Yeah, I will do some research, and then I'll come back some.
Do you have that?
I do. So, the standard scheduled meetings are 48 a year, council meetings and study sessions. We typically average, are looking at a five-year average of 67, so there can be additional joint board meetings and all of those. This year, to date, we've had 84. So, we currently, we typically, the standard schedule's 48, a standard year is 67, and as of this meeting, we're at 84. So, a lot of extra meetings.
Right. Perhaps the, perhaps the mayor should summarize some of the accomplishments that have come out of that.
We have accomplished a lot, so, but, but, given that, you know, I thought that was information, good information to share, it does, it does show how hard we have worked, but we need to calendar some of these and prioritize them and move forward in that way. Anybody else with future agenda items?
We don't want to scare any future candidates.
That's right.
We don't want, yeah.
Yeah.
It's really worth it, honest.
Councilor Booker, did you want to add?
Well, I was, in the realm of criminalization, that was one of the statements I offered to the Transgender Day of Remembrance, was a review of, potential review, council supported, if that was the case, of looking at our laws relative to hate crimes specifically, and I made the statement that I'm, I too am not, don't have an agenda for additional criminalization of anything. I guess, you were in a tense, heard me say that, except for hate crimes.
Yeah.
And I think we heard District Attorney Champagne talk about his commitment to a higher level enforcement of hate crimes, and I think another one, a topic to, for us to discuss is encouraging a review of our laws relative to hate crimes and seeing if there's anything we can add teeth to, and also discuss it with our PD in terms of effective enforcement. And I think it's also incumbent upon us to understand what our PD already knows and the training that they've had relative to transgender 101. I didn't even know that that existed, but it's a training that.
And 201.
And 201, yeah, absolutely. And it's a really interesting topic, and it, not only that it covers transgender issues, but all kinds of hate crime and, and discrimination of all time, so I think it's really important for us to do that, but in balance, in one way, it can foster decriminalization.
I think it's a totally appropriate thing for us to be looking into more.
Thank you.
Excellent. So. Do we have more to add to our list?
Yes, the suggestion was made that I, that I, that I present my list in this forum, so this is, this is what I'm doing.
And Amber's got her pen in hand.
Well.
I can send her a copy of.
Make sure they map.
So, talking about capital reserves, CIP reserves and all sorts of other things, I think that one of the biggest conversations that I've seen in advisory boards and other areas of conversation is that we don't have a clear, we use words in a way that maybe for some people works, because they've used those words all the time, but for other people coming from a different perspective, those words don't mean the same thing, such as operations, maintenance, capital improvement projects, capital replacement projects, new capital projects. I mean, so I think that having a conversation around what do these things really mean, so that when our advisory boards are having conversations about, is this maintenance? Or is this a CIP? Or is this this? They're not struggling with what's the definition, which muddies the entire conversation. They're, they are able to know, here's where we are. And I know that there are some definitions about things in different departments, but I do think that this might be a really good thing to either revisit, if we've visited it before, or to have a very robust conversation about what, what do these things really mean, so that we can move forward and not be arguing about the words by discussing the projects.
At the council level, like in a study session, is that where you're suggesting?
Uh, yeah, because I think that's where the direction's going to have to come from, it's going to have to come from council to the boards and also the staff about what we're thinking. And of course, we would get staff and advisory board involvement in this conversation somewhere along the way, but, yeah.
Okay.
I also, as I sometimes have a tendency to do, I jumped on board a project that, you know, I have been advocating for the upgrade to standard of the art trail, and one of those sections that's incredibly problematic is the section between high school. And one of, is problematic because of the condition that it's in, but it's also problematic because apparently CPW needs to do some spring work there before we can do our work. And so, as a peer-to-peer relationship concept, I wanted to meet with CPW and understand exactly what's, what their needs are and why they can't get it done, and what their challenges are, and how we might support them making it happen, so that we can then step up and make our part of it happen. So, I was hoping that council would support that concept. It's not, it's, it's not, so it's, it's with the concept that staff would help educate about, you know, there's, would be staff-level conversation, but there's also peer-level conversation. So, I would hope that we could do that, so that I'm, because I'm, we've been working on this for years, and we're not making any progress, and I don't know why, and I'm hoping that maybe just a different kind of conversation might help with that.
I think that's a good idea. I have a little insight to the operation, and I think that would be a really effective method of communication with CPW.
Okay, so, do we?
I think peer-to-peer is great.
Okay. Amber, do you have thoughts?
As long as we're making sure that the history of years of staff work, of working with CPW is, you know, included in the conversation, so that when we continue those conversations to get the projects done, and, you know, it starts moving, and we're back in the picture as staff, that we can continue doing what we need to do, I just want to make sure that there's no, that everyone continues to be on the same page, kind of along the same lines as the terminology.
That's what I appreciate from bringing that up, Councilor Baxter, and.
Well, the original proposal was that staff, Scott and Clay, would accompany me.
Right.
For that purpose, and, and there's, there's agreement, I believe, from, from staff that that's a way that we could move forward.
I think a coordinated conversation works great, because then it can be a more productive conversation, rather than separate conversations, then, yeah, that sounds, that's.
And I was approaching it from the idea that I'm like one of the biggest voices complaining about what we're doing, and I want to help make it different, so it's, it's taking responsibility for my position, trying to do something.
I appreciate that.
I do have one question, though.
Yeah.
I think in this case, like Dean said, this, this might be the right solution. I think we do need to be careful about using your political hammer and expending the political capital, and then I do, and we'll talk about peer-to-peer, just in terms of vernacular and what the definitions are, I think if, if you ask staff, we might consider ourselves peers of the people working as staff at CPW, and so, policymaker to policymaker, peer, like staff to staff, so just making sure that we're, at least we know where we stand and what role we're playing.
Sure, sure. And my intention there was to, to find out what the challenges are, and then to go beyond that, to have conversa, further conversations at a higher level about what the challenges are, because until I'm informed, I can't have that conversation.
Right.
But like, peer-to-peer, that's awesome semantics for nudge, that's, but.
That was my semantic for nudge.
But, on the other hand, I think we'll find that our peers are not in Durango.
No, and I, I don't doubt that.
Not as nudge.
But I can start at the top if I don't know what I'm talking about.
Right.
So, the other thing that I would like to talk about, which has kind of seemed to have fallen off the mark somehow, is the use of Santa Rita Park, and there's a, there's a, it's tied in with numerous different things, and the homeless situation of the idea of putting the homeless camp at the tech center is tied into the idea of using the Pepsi site for snow storage, and all three of these are tied in in many ways. For example, Parks and Rec needs storage, particularly because the Mason Center is falling apart, so if we did somehow do some sort of way of dealing with the Pepsi site, and we could also, the sheriff will be moving his gear out of there sometime, hopefully around March of 2020. It's, it's heated, it might have great Parks and Rec storage, it might also be a great location for the Vector storage for the next year, until we talk about what we might want to happen at Santa Rita Park, whether we do Vector Building and Police Station, what, you know, what kind of plans do we want to do? Do we want to put Parks and Rec storage there? I don't know. So, I would like to, that's a really big conversation with multi-pieces coming in together, so I think we should consider that. Quick question for you, Kevin, does Twin Buttes have an affordable housing agreement?
Does who?
Twin Buttes.
They have a compliance agreement that requires that the needs that say 16% that are in development, it's not under the fair share of the standalone agreement.
And it's, did you say 16%?
It's a voluntary transfer.
But they don't have to build affordable housing?
There's not an easy, quick answer here. They have a commitment and a development agreement to meet the same 16% as all the other developments in the community that do for sale housing.
So, 16% of their housing has to be affordable?
No, they have to meet a 16% commitment, which could be paid down in any number of ways, the transfer fee, the development of units, through donation of land. The compliance agreement has been immensely tricky at Twin Buttes, and we are still not done having the conversation about ultimately what it looks like. Their 16% is met over time, so we have, you know, what do we got up there? Probably 15 homes, and then another couple buildings full of condos, so we're just getting started, but it can be met in any number of ways, as we just talked about.
Thank you, I just had a community member ask me about that.
Transfer fee is part of that equation.
Right, okay.
As I recall, the original master plan up there did have, in fact, some allocated sites for affordable housing, but to date.
Does have a bid.
There is, there's a parcel that was identified for a multifamily building. Conversation with previous administration over there, if you will, the development team, they wanted to just build it, and the new group, there hasn't been a lot of conversation about that right now, because they're busy putting up homes to sell, so it's still on the table for discussion.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Councilor Baxter?
I'm going to try to keep up on track.
Can you clarify the Santa Rita, because you went from Santa Rita to like Pepsi Building?
Yeah, so, we have numerous needs, and we have numerous areas that those needs might be met.
Okay, so, can we just put it on the calendar?
Yes, and that is already on staff's list of discussion at Santa Rita.
Thank you, we're not going to solve that now, guys?
Yeah.
So, are we going to have, are we going to have a meeting, you said we're going to probably have a meeting early in the year that prioritize things?
I would like to.
So, can we bring up more things at that point in time?
Absolutely.
Then I'm, then I'm done.
Great, okay, thanks.
You want to send me your list, it'll help me.
Yes.
We've got more time.
Councilor Teague, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, I think the agenda's pretty full.
Right, and I do not either. Councilor Booker, you're done? Okay, future president. All right, with that, I believe that that brings us to the end of our meeting. Our next meeting is not until Tuesday, December 3rd, when we will have the, I believe, final budget on the approval on the agenda, and I do want to thank our PIO professionals, Victor Locke and Mitchell Carter in the back room, thank you for bringing us live on DGAU, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. room, thank you for bringing us live on DGA, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.